The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order of the Berlindown Council Tuesday, September 20th, 2016, and if we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Councilor Campagnelli.
Here.
Councilor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Kozinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Pinesa.
Here.
Councilor O'Shea.
Here.
Councilor Russell. Mayor, you have a form.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Next is our presentation of a proclamation to Becky Carrier. Hang on one second, let me read, read a little bit about it, and then I will meet you at the podium there. Your project, this is, this is for the Girl Scout Gold Award proclamation, which I know you already have, and we'll read it when I, when I meet you up there, but I just want to talk about your project for a minute. Your project was titled "The Elder's Encyclopedia" and was geared towards those that have elderly family members. The Elder's Encyclopedia was created as a resource guide for adults to assist in taking care of elderly family members. The Elder's Encyclopedia outlines specialty services, walking clinics, federal and state agencies, prevention of emergencies, cleaning, lawn and transportation services, living arrangements, activities for seniors, legal resources, programs to check for eligibility, and other resources. Becky recruited Berlin upbeat members to help compile the encyclopedia and spread the word in order to make a local impact. Her thought is that she could make a more global impact if other towns created their own version of the Elder's Encyclopedia. In order to make her project sustainable, she distributed hard copies of the Elder's Encyclopedia around town and asked that it be posted on the Town of Berlin website, on the Berlin Senior Center, and the Berlin Police Department webpages. You're also in the process of having it posted on the Ratchford High Center website. Okay, great. That's, that's a great project. Let's remove the proclamation here. So, Town of Berlin, Town Council proclamation. It is, let it be hereby known to all that the Town of Berlin hereby recognizes Becky Carrier on achieving the Gold Award, the highest award in Girl Scouting. In recognition of her commitment to her family, community, and the principles of Girl Scouting, the Town Council congratulates Becky and extends best wishes to her and all her future endeavors dated this, back in June, 24th day of June, Berlin, Connecticut. So congratulations, sounds like a great project. Nice job. Thanks. Nice job. Thanks to your raising a great daughter here, doing some great projects. Okay, now we have our audience of citizens. If anyone wishes to address the council, now is your time about whatever you want to talk to us about. Yes? Yeah, Len.
It's okay. Mayor. Len Zelensky, 24 Wine Sap Road, speaking as both a resident and chairman of the Park and Rec Commission. First of all, as far as park and rec goes, I noticed that the Lions Club is on your agenda for a wa, waiver of traffic costs at the Berlin Fair, which I don't have any problem with. What I would like to see is, we have, and our commission's been handling the golf course, that is a major business in town, we generate close to a million dollars a year. What I'd like to have is consideration from the Lions that any, any endeavors, and I can't speak for other organizations, because there are many worthwhile organizations that use the fair as fundraisers, but I have to look at it from Timberland's standpoint. We'd like to be able to work with the Lions and get a commitment from them to let Timberland post a advertising banner to promote the golf course. We're trying to, we have an advertising budget, we try to, that's focused primarily on the video media, some radio, and this would give us a, a low cost, basically just the cost of a banner, if we could do that. Okay, now my real reason for being here. You've got, you've got Bicentennial Dog Park on the agenda tonight. I don't know whether I would be given an opportunity to speak during the discussion, so I'm coming up now to...
You can speak in both places if you like.
Well, if you'd rather, I wait, I'll wait.
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll keep it on, yeah.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, it's, because it's really just an informal discussion, so...
I understand that, and I just have, I've got some history and some points.
Oh, good. That would be helpful.
Can I ask you a question about the, the Berlin Fair? Now, in the past, the, Timberland has had a space in the fair, the Lions have given them space to do some promotional activities, are, are you doing that again?
I, I don't think so. Part of the problem is getting people to man that particular booth, and when we have manned it in the past, I don't know whether we paid a booth fee or not. I'll be honest, I'm ignorant on that fact. We may have, we may not have, but I was just looking at a, you know, putting up a banner, and this really was triggered by a request by the Lions to hang a banner, and they had an event going on, I think, a Beer Fest, they wanted to put a banner up at, at Timberland, and the timing of that wasn't, wasn't good to allow the commission to act on it, so that didn't happen. But, you know, if they, if they're going to have these types of events, I don't think the commission's going to have a problem, we've just got to be approached ahead of time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, you sure can.
My name, my name is Lenny Tubbs, I'm the president of the Berlin Fair this year, and I reside at 48 Patterson Way in Berlin. I've spoken to Len about this a little bit at the meeting we went to a couple of weeks ago, and I, I thought they wanted to put a booth up at the fair, so I told him he had to go through the proper channels, and I gave him the information to contact Diane Dornfried. But as far as putting a banner up for the Timberland, I don't think there'd be any problem at all. As a matter of fact, as far as I'm concerned, give me the banner, I'll get it up. That's, you know, we have to, this is what the town is about, and what the Lions Club is about, and what everybody in town should be about, is about supporting each other and helping each other make things right in Berlin. So, that's my feeling about it.
Great. Sounds great. Thank you.
Give me the banner.
That was easy.
Problem solved. If you solve something here tonight, that's, that's good. Great. I assume we have the banner already? We have a banner?
[laughing].
Wait a second. Why did I ask that last question? No, it's okay. We can get, we still got a week, right? We got, we got time. I'm sure the printers will happily up for us. Okay, great. Any other wanted some citizen people to speak? No? Okay, hearing that, we'll close that portion of our hearing and move on to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. I'm just going to break those two items out if I could tonight, so...
Make a motion?
Topic number one, if we could, have a motion on that.
Can I make a motion to separate these two consent agenda items for purpose of discussion?
Second?
Are you going to talk about both of them?
Just the first one, we just wanted to make, really just wanted to make a comment.
You don't even have to, just say that they're not going on consent, just put them on regular.
Oh, regular, okay.
Yeah, and then they can still be the...
One A.
One A, one A and two A or something?
Also move to, hold the first one off.
Move to remove the consent agenda items and put them into new business.
Okay, second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you. All right, so one, we'll call it one A. Want to make a motion for one A?
Sure. Move to approve waiving the police traffic control fees for the Berlin Lions Club 2016 Berlin Fair in the approximate amount of $25,618. Said figure is to be exactly determined after the fair.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, just a comment, appreciate all the Lions do for us. One of the things that we did in this budget that was a difficult budget, as we all know, and we're able to reduce that income amount and still be able to get the budget we needed, so we want to support it, and this was something regular and consistent over the years, and we're able to build that into the budget.
Oh, good. Great. So we're not really losing, because we kind of already took care of that earlier, great. Okay, any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you, guys. Let's, let's hope our no rain streak continues, but we always know how that goes.
No, I know.
We got it, it's out there, it's out there. We know, after how many years, right? Okay, topic number two, oh, two A. Item two A, motion on that.
Move to accept donations to the Berlin Animal Control Donation Account for $25 and services in the amount of $466.04.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. So moved, thank you. Okay, now on to topic one. We have our...
This may be one of the last reports out from Tom Smith from Gilbane, and we've asked him to come here to give us a recap, because it's been a while. I think he, the last time was the early spring, I think it was, when he was last here, so he's here to give a report.
Great.
Awesome.
Great.
Hard to believe I actually came to my first meeting on the high school on December 5th of 2011, so I'm on five years, it's been a long prospect. The good news, we got the certificate of occupancy for most of the balance of the school on August 26th. Some of the areas were ahead of schedule, it was anticipated everything north of the senior courtyard was going to be the end of this month. It turns out, we turned over an additional standard classroom, a music room, storage, the upbeat room, and some of the other rooms are falling into place right now. The jazz room was turned over yesterday, the chorus room's going to be turned over next Monday. The only remaining two pieces, and you may have heard something about this, is the auditorium and the band room. We had an issue where the cherry veneer on the panels in the auditorium actually started delaminating after they finished them. Turned out to be a manufacturing problem with the plywood. The plywood manufacturer made good on it, he's covering all the costs for all the labor to refabricate. They are being installed, and basically we're targeting instead of September 30th, October 15th, to turn over the auditorium and the band room, so it hasn't had a serious impact. At this point, we're going to be demobilizing the trailers and everything across the street in the staging area by the end of next week. I myself and a couple of people from FIP will be occupying some closets in the school for a little while till the auditorium and so on is done.
A couple of big, large closets.
They're, they're large enough to get the job done, punch list, and then we should be pretty much wrapped up by sometime in, I would say, mid-November with punch list and all.
That's awesome.
So, at this point, I'd say the project is basically right on the schedule, it was intended, and we are still under our approved budget.
Yes.
Great. Great to hear, good news. Just a question, I know as you leave across the street, are we gonna, is there anything to kind of put that back to a little bit better shape than it may be in with all the trucks in and out of there, or that's just...
Yeah, there's a plan to take basically the area that's within the fence compound where the trailers resided...
Right.
And grade that off nicely to leave it as basically an overflow parking area for the soccer fields that are to the west of the school, or if they need it for any other event. Everything else will be actually, the, the Millings will all be bulldozed into piles for the town to take away, and the areas will be ceded, so it'll be restored again.
Oh, okay, great.
Excellent.
Great. Great, any...
That's awesome news.
Yeah, any questions?
Just a comment, I've been here since the beginning, actually, since the beginning of this whole thing, when the Board of Ed first had, was a glimmer in their eye. So, just thank you for, I know it's been a long haul for you, there were some ups and downs, but I am really pleased that this town has a high school that was finished on time and under budget, and I know that, you know, there were some, there were some issues at some points in the road, but you guys did your job, and, and I think we have a beautiful high school.
Well, thank you, and of course, it's a, it's a whole team effort. We've had great cooperation from the administration over there, FIP's done a great job, the trade contractors, it's, it's been a team effort, and it has turned out nice, we're proud of it.
Looks great. Thank you.
At Open House, everybody was fascinated with the water running through, they're all like, oh, what is that? It's like a Zen garden, it's the heating system, they're using water to heat.
Well, one of the things, as we were adding components on, the, the water system keeps getting added for new units and all, it all is going to be rebalanced from last time, which it'll eliminate that.
Yeah, they liked it. It wasn't a bad thing, it was very soothing.
I was just going to add that, that the choir director was commenting that she doesn't necessarily want it there when she's trying to have people sing and so forth, but she explained to the concerned parents that that will go away, and the balancing, as you indicated, will take place.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Rachel said, truly thank you from the bottom of my heart. I was on the Board of Education during that whole time period, and this is something that we really tried very hard to get, and it's a very important thing for our community, so you guys have given us a lot of wonderful things. That's right. Thank you.
And good luck on your next project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one other one. Will it be a, a report on how far under budget, you ended up on that?
Yeah, we'll finalize the figures and all. Of course, the real key is nothing is final until a state audits, because the state will come in and look at all the...
Yeah, it was just, you know, kind of a pre-unaudited, and then there certainly will be the final audit.
I'll say right now, we're looking at right now, we're about $900,000 under budget on the owner's side, and there's additional monies that will be returned from the construction manager from their contingency and allowances.
Okay, thank you.
When do we, when would, the state audit, how long does that take? I can only imagine, but...
It's actually, part of it has to do, well, part of it has to do with the town, as to how quickly they decide to file the EDO 49F with the state, and then the state has six months to respond to that and so on, but typically they're a good year out, or up to two or three years, it depends.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Just, just to follow up on that, and, so that didn't get into anything where we had to talk about the 5% over, you know, we did get some additional funding through some legislation and so forth, and so that represents under that, that $900,000 represents under that additional funding that came through.
Yeah, and just to correct that, when you said we got additional funding, what actually happened is you reduced your local share by eliminating the space penalty, which increased the reimbursement from the state. So, that's how that actually was accomplished, with that special legislation.
That's true.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nice. Topic two.
This is the Housing Authority Option Agreement and the extension thereof. Unfortunately, Mr. Bajorzki was unable to, to join us this evening, but Mayor, you had requested that it be on for discussion purposes.
Yeah, I mean, just, no action tonight on this, I know Joe couldn't make a devil long conversation with Joe Bajorzki the other night, and a little bit with our town attorney as well, just trying to, you know, we're trying to break out that four acre piece off his project, and I think the, the crux of the question seems to be between what Joe has said and what we've discussed is, we don't want to disturb his financing arrangement to, we, in, in no way do we want to stop any forward progress on the project, although we are stopped at the moment anyway because of the easement on that additional piece of property, so we're kind of stuck right now. So, I thought it would be an opportune time to look at that piece, since there is that easement on it, which has taken a lot longer to get through DEP than I think we, everyone thought, and of course, they didn't find it till, what, a few months ago, I believe?
It was the beginning of this year.
Beginning of summer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we're stuck anyway, so, the question is, how do we get to his financing people? Jeff, I just remember we were talking about it, just as, if, I guess we can go to Joe and see who we could even have a conversation with, which I kind of alluded to with Joe, and he, I think he's okay with that.
That's right, that's, that's what needs to happen. We need to have direct communication with the funding sources to find out whether or not, in underwriting the financing, the elimination or deletion of the four acres is going to impact the decision in any type of an adverse way. And, you know, I know that Chris Edge had reached out to CHA, but we need to talk directly with the funding sources and not rely on assumptions or expectations.
Yeah, I agree, and, again, one of the reasons why this has come up again, at this point, is because of the easement and because of that parcel, his, you know, four acre or 3.9 acre parcel for the two senior housing buildings are, it's contained in that 3.9 acre parcel, none of it goes over the lines, the setbacks have been met through planning and zoning, so, you know, this is why it might be a time to see which would, if we could cut that piece out, which would sort of end the, trying to remove that easement as well, so...
Would there be any zoning issues with occupancy rates shrinking it by half? I don't know if you'd have to go back through P&amp;Z or...
We might have to go back through P&amp;Z, spoke to them, I think it would be, they kind of took care of it all on that three point acre, but we might have to go back, maybe just for another 824, I'm not sure, but we could do that relatively quickly, I mean, it, it sounds like that easement would not be lifted, lifted very quickly anyway, that, that's why it's sort of the time to, you know, sort of came up, because we were stuck anyway with the easement. So, I guess moving forward, if we could, we'll get with Joe as soon as possible, and with our town attorney here, if we could...
Yeah, I could put it on for the next agenda, but in the meantime...
Can we, yeah, because I mean, I know we have some time, not much time left, but I mean, if we...
There's two meetings in October that we can, the, the option expires October 31st, so...
So, we should have plenty of time to have those discussions, is, is what my hope would be, so we'll just table it for that, any other comments?
No action, okay.
So, we know, no action.
I would just say, maybe if we talk to, well, maybe, if it does have to go back to P&amp;Z, if we can maybe discuss waiving any additional fees that they would have to do, I think that, you know, we could...
Yeah. No, I've had some discussions with Denise and Helen and myself, yeah, that, that shouldn't be an issue. So, yeah, all right, so we'll table this, and we'll get on the next agenda, and hopefully in the meantime, Denise, if we could talk to Joe, and maybe with Attorney DiNofrio, get his lending sources directly, and maybe get everybody on a, at a minimum, a phone call, and see if we could just get some answers before we make a decision. That'd be great. Okay, thanks. Item three is an update on economic development.
Chris is here to discuss the update.
Good evening, council members. Couple of quick things, wanted to mention a couple of relocations that have actually come to town recently. The first is South Cross, which is a home healthcare agency, which ended up buying an industrial condo, or office condo, on Demming Road, came from Newington, I think they have 30 or 40 people, most of which work outside of the office in people's homes. Serenity Solutions, which is a small holistic health group, two, three people who relocated onto Farmington Avenue from Plainville. Douglas Mechanical, which is an HVAC fir, HVAC firm, which purchased an industrial condo down on Four Round Road, also came from Plainville. Lion and Billard Design Center, if you see, the hardware store is under renovation right now, what they're doing essentially is turning the inside into the design center. They're moving that from Washington Avenue down in Middletown. They're still going to have a small hardware store in the back, but really it's going to be a, a highlight for Farmington Avenue, because essentially contractors, homeowners can come in and see all of the stuff for your bathroom here, and your kitchen here, and it's really going to highlight the latest and greatest, and people can actually give you ideas on how to design, as well as costs. That's a major remodeling of that. The last is Forest Machine, which we had come through for the incentives last week, our last meeting, excuse me, coming from Rocky Hill, their construction will hopefully start soon on the parcel on Christian Lane. A couple other things, PetSmart, which is in the Home Depot Plaza, their construction is almost complete. I'm waiting to hear back from them, they're going to be doing grand opening events on three consecutive weekends, as soon as I have those, I will let all the council members know, would love to have you there. The development for Stick Village, Realty 3 is up in, operating in building two, building three is almost complete. I don't know about the tenants on that one, but I know Mr. Wicklund is talking to a couple of people about building three. The last thing is our Accura and retail development on the Turnpike. The, the walls in the wood are going up on the 17,000 square foot retail building, they're putting in, I believe, the foundation at this point in the Accura dealership, hopefully come spring 2017, we will have the new dealership up, new tenants on the Turnpike here in Berlin.
Great.
Coming together quick, I have to track by there.
That's a big building, that is one large building, yeah, it's nice, I'm sure it'll look nice.
It is.
Great, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the update.
It's great news.
All good stuff. Number four, which is at my request, so actually, Len, if you want to come up and give us some history, I just, I put it on the agenda just because I had some residents come up to me in a couple of different places to talk about it, so...
This goes back quite a ways, I was looking at some of the minutes, and it kind of starts in, I think, March of 2001, with a, the ordinance being presented, the open space ordinance being presented to the council, and the Park and Rec Commission was listed as being in favor of it, was noted as being in favor. Subsequently, the Park and Rec Commission went to the ordinance committee, and we recommended that they have a leash law, in addition to putting a parking lot inside of Bicentennial. And one of the reasons for the leash law is that it, it establishes more control. People right now are coming in, because they can let their dogs run free, they, they park in the cul-de-sac, they, the dogs are not leashed when they get out of the car. This was one of the criteria that an original group headed up by a gentleman named Paul Dami, who I think was from Southington, who was initially involved with policing the area periodically, that they, they, it was one of the criteria, they said that you will leash your dogs coming out of the cars, people don't do that, and when the, the dogs are exuberant when they get out of the cars, and, so they're running around, and they go on Betsy Piskorsky's lawn, and on the lawn, lawn across the street, and they leave their marks, and they're, you know, it's like, they think it's a bank, they make a deposit, so, anyway...
Nice way of putting it, I'm not sure I've ever heard it described that way, that's a good way to describe it, though, yeah.
But, and, and, so, it's, it's been long ongoing, I, I reviewed a lot of the comments as far as the audience of citizens went, and we had a lot of people for leash laws, a lot of people against leash laws, the neighbors came out and forced the neighbors. Right now, I, if I told the neighbors right now, they're saying, screw it, we've had enough, you know, you guys just don't want to take that particular stand. The comments were made along the way, that they felt that when we, the other open spaces opened up down on Orchard Road, the Bradley property, access from Kensington Road, that it would take the pressure off, and it really hasn't. It, where it may bleed a little off is, if somebody is, is taking and walking their dog for exercise, they're more likely to go down to Hatchery Brook, or, I still refer to it as the Bradley property, but there, because they'll walk with the dog, and they're looking for exercise as well as the dog. Lot of people that come into Bicentennial Park just want to let the dogs run and stand there, and while they're doing that. One of the things that, the, Bicentennial Park is no longer under the control of the Park and Rec Commission. In about 2006, it was, has turned over its open space to the Conservation Commission, but just prior to that, we had changed the operating hours as, as a, a part of the Park and Rec Commission's ability to set policies. The previous, the, the hours were dawn to dusk, that's indefinite. We changed it to sunrise to sunset. You can take and look up on any given day when sun rises and when the sun sets, so there's no question. And one of the other reasons for doing that is, I live on Wine Sap Road, I'm at, at the Norton Road end, so I'm, I'm not really affected, because some people go by, drive by my house, and some people use the coal, coal lane as the entrance, but I, I used to see people coming out when I had to stop mowing my lawn, because it was too dark to see. And the thing is, if their dogs aren't on a leash, and this is one of the key things, with a dog on a leash, you know when they're making the deposit, and you can pick it up. Even during the day, if he's not on a leash, and he's a good distance off, is the owner going to go locate that and, and pick it up? Even worse, if it's dusk, can the owner even see what has happened? Less likely for that to happen.
So, we never did the leash law, or whatever happened with that?
No, and I don't know exactly what year it was, but there was an attempt by a council to enforce or to, an ordinance committee, a leash law.
That was about 05, 06. That was about oh five, oh six.
Oh five, oh six, and there was a outcry from the dog owners that packed the house, so to speak. I can tell you that the two animal control officers are in favor of a leash law, they would love to have a leash law, because there have been many instances, currently, the, the way our ordinances read is that the dogs must be under control of the owner.
Quite a nebulous term.
It very much is, and people argue the point, and there have been dog bites, there have been occasions where in other parks, Veterans Park, there was a rather severe dog bite, and the dog certainly was not under control, but the individual felt that they had control. So, the, the dog, or animal control officers would welcome a leash law.
Well, yeah, that makes sense, I mean, I, my own personal experience there, having hiked through their lot, because I lived near there too, when my son was younger, you know, never mind a bite, but my son, who was allergic to dogs, you know, a dog came running up to him, oh, he's going to be friendly, I said, well, yeah, that's great, now I had to take him home and give him a Benadryl, because he licked my son to death, but, he, he, he is allergic nonetheless, he was, so, you know, and I, I do see them running all over the place up there, it's, it's a little bit disconcerting, and I, I'm a dog person myself, but, have a dog, but, you know.
I will say historically, too, the police have given us their input, and, and while I'm not opposed to a leash law, enforcement of that becomes a very big issue for the police. They, they did express who's going to go out and stand there from sunrise to sunset and enforce that, and that's not a reason not to do it, but I just want to put that out there, that, you know, the enforcement folks have kind of put their two cents in as well. We also discussed taking a piece of that property and making it a true dog park, so it's fenced in, and that was not supported very much, so, it's, it's, and, and I know the folks at Wine Sap have had it, I know they have, but, you know, so.
It's everywhere, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, the, the folks have.
It's especially bad.
Wine Sap aside, I mean, it's, to me, it's a safety issue for people in our parks, you know, and granted, we're not going to enforce, again, granted, it might be difficult to enforce it, but at least we have it, if we need it. So, you know, I would personally like to see us go down that road and enact a leash law myself, going forward, but, yeah, go ahead.
To the point about the police enforcing a leash law, I, I went to, Dave Seer brought up a Connecticut statute in one of his discussions, I went and I read that, I checked it, and if I'm not mistaken, the statute says that it's, the animal control officer is the one that has to enforce the leash law. But, you know, you mentioned with the, the children running in, people are reluctant to bring kids into the park, because that, the dog comes up, the do-, the owner may think he's friendly, the kid is, becomes terrified, or in your case, you've got a medical issue, and, and maybe the kid goes down, and who knows how a dog is going to react when a kid goes down, he may just lick him, but still, the kid is, is terrified. And kind of one of the other issues is, what does it do to the property values? Are you going to have an open house on a Saturday, Saturday or Sunday afternoon, when you see all these cars coming in and out? It, it's going to be, you know, people aren't even going to want to look if they see that unless they happen to be a dog owner, and then, no matter what they are, dog owner or not, that becomes a downward price negotiation factor, so it, it, it really does affect the residents.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we should start with the leash law, but, and I know, I know that went around as far as have some type of fenced in area, I know that never got very far, but, to me, most towns have that with their dog parks, you know, I know Stanford had a fenced in area, a bunch of towns have them, right, all over the place, and, and other places I've lived to, in other states, I mean, that's typically what they do, and that way, at least the dogs can run around, but they're in their fenced in area, I don't know what, you know.
And part of the problem is that publicly, it is considered a dog park, it's actually out on the web as a dog park, which is not its intended use, its intended use was, you know, recreational use. So, if there is a leash law enacted, you may see the parking problem decline, because people may not be as apt to come out and use it, and it becomes less of a dog park and more of an open space recreational area, so.
Which is what it's supposed to be.
Right, correct.
Well, one of, one of the other things, as far as the open space area goes, we've just had a request come through parking rec, and it got referred to the Conservation Commission for a, the high school mountain biking club wanted to either run a race or a rally, and they want to use the open spaces, and I think that was turned down in a previous season, I don't know what their reaction to this is going to be, but those trails over there, when I first moved in in seventy-one, we used to take the old three speeds, and there, there were, there were trails through there that were hard enough that they're just pounded dirt, that you could ride a bicycle through them, and it, it was really great, because if you weren't a walker, you could bike it. We used to see horses using that, too, and we've got some issue with, as far as ordinance goes, I don't know whether horses are allowed right now, I didn't kind of look into that, but, you know, the, the, we've got such vast amounts of land, that we should be able to have the multiple uses.
Mr. Town Attorney, what say you about all this? I'm sure you have something to say, right?
If the space is intended as an open space recreation area, and it's being used as a dog park, then it sounds like a leash law is appropriate. In terms of other uses, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know the history of it, but from an insurance perspective, you're going to have a hard time getting a policy to have biking, what's been described.
And, and one thing I'll say about a leash law is, I don't think you can specify it just to bicentennial, so the ordinances for the whole town, just so everybody is aware that it, it may become an issue in the past.
Which is, which is a good thing.
It is, it's not, but I just, you know.
I think, so, yeah, now I get it.
Be prepared for the backlash.
Sure. One dog person, find another dog person, sorry.
Just a comment, because I've experienced both sides of it, in the sense of talking to different people, and the, the folks that are conscientious, dog owners, and will, will explain the process and how they're working as a team to clean up after there and so forth, and, because I was there, and, at a time when my daughter got ran over by a dog, and, not ran over, that's probably a little exaggeration, but she was small enough to tip over when the dog came up to her, but, so, I got talking with that owner, and, you know, asked, you know, and they felt a little bad, bad about it, and they felt that this dog never typically does that, and, and that's, that's part of the concern, but, they talked about how they had a group of them that were putting the plastic bags, you know, stocking it next to the little sign there and so forth, so, I mean, they, it's, there's a conscientious group that's trying to do it out there, and then, and then a few bad apples can, can make it difficult, but I, at some point, you got to come to some standard that expectation of where folks come into Berlin and, and what they can do here to have a good time.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's always the.
If I may, Rachel's comment about the leash law, Rachel, in, in the ordinance, the open space ordinance, we, the leash law is specified in there as being on a leash or under control, so it would appear that that ordinance can be specific to open spaces and not necessarily applied to the rest of the town. I'm not the legal expert, though, but that, that's, just that observation to you.
Okay, thank you.
What do you, what do you think about that?
No, it should be applied to the entire town.
The whole town? I would, I would imagine that'd be the fair way, yeah.
I, I think that we could certainly, I could certainly put together an ordinance committee meeting to start the process and go from there, see where it takes everyone.
I think that would be a good idea, we're all kind of on the same page on that, yeah. Okay, I mean, it's been a problem for many years, I know we've tried to solve it, you know, councils have tried to solve it, maybe we'll take another stab at it, see if it works this time, because I know people are still upset, as we know. Okay, good, thanks, Len. Okay, number five.
JGP Partners has applied with a site plan and special permit application for a twenty unit apartment complex located in East Berlin. This is now the third time the application has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They had submitted it and then withdrew it due to time constraints, statutory time limits. The town had to negotiate with the company to provide environmental consulting, there's some issues, and they are now going to refile, and they are seeking a request to waive the, the additional third time special permit application of two hundred and twenty dollars and the site plan application of one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, as they have paid that before. I did speak with Director Riggins, who is, has been on vacation, but she indicated that she does support this, in that the site plan itself has not really changed, the fee waiver is being requested, there's not a lot of additional staff time that would be required to review this on the third go around, and he's also paid for two peer review fees in the past, so she felt that this was a legitimate request on behalf of JGP Partners.
Okay, this is the, on the corner of.
Main Street.
Main Street and Mill, Mill Street there, right?
Yes, in East Berlin.
Right, East Berlin.
Yep.
Okay, motion?
Okay, move to approve the request by JGP Partners to waive the special permit application of two hundred and twenty dollars and the site plan application fee of one thousand nine hundred and forty dollars.
Okay, second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? Not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Just a clarification on.
Yes. Oh, yes.
JPG.
Need to come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, come on up.
Spell it backwards.
Didn't, what, oh, we spelled it wrong?
I'm sorry.
Oh.
So, I just wanted to make sure that I was correct on whatever forms that you're going to do.
You caught that? I think we were supposed to know that. What is it supposed to be, JP?
JPG.
I just ordered it to some other company in other state.
Might be their bonus, you know.
We appreciate it, we've been at the parcel for about four years now, trying to remediate it, it's coming along.
Great.
So, hopefully, we'll have construction in about six months.
Good.
Show you guys something.
Oh, good, look forward to it, thank you.
Thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah. Okay, number six.
Back in July, a bond ordinance in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was authorized for the purchase and installation of the large whole building generator at the high school. The generator was purchased directly by the town utilizing the NJPA contract, if you recall, the electrical portion was designed and publicly bid, the generator cost was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which was lower than we had anticipated, leaving a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for the electrical. Unfortunately, the electrical bids came in a little higher than the hundred and thirty-eight, bids were received, the low bid was from Ferguson Electric Company in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, so there was a little differential. There is, there are funds available, Doug Solak has looked at some of the other school expense accounts, and he can afford to take fifty thousand dollars from one and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars from the other for the total amount that's short.
Okay, do we have a motion on this?
Excuse me, okay, move to award a bid for the Berlin High School generator upgrade to Ferguson Electric Company Incorporated of Plainville, Connecticut, in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand dollars, and authorize the town manager to enter into change orders if necessary for an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a second on this?
Second.
And we have discussion?
Yeah, some questions, Larry.
Okay.
Mr. Solak, if you wouldn't mind, that'd be great. So, in those two accounts, it's contractual services under school expenses, although one's a five hundred account, and I wasn't quite sure where that was coming from, could you indicate what that was designated for and why you're answering that, I'm just looking to see what items will not be done in those accounts for having to pull from those accounts, if there's anything that we had slated, and now we're going to have to delay it to next year's budget.
Sure, some of the projects over the years have come in under budget, so we've been able to put, put a small reserve into that account.
Into the five hundred.
Into the five hundred, correct.
Okay.
And we do, we did have, if you recall, the univentilator project at Willard School, which was approved last year to do a partial project, we, we held off on that, secured some additional funding to do the project in its entirety, so we feel that what's been allocated in that service to do the project in its entirety, plus what we have in the five hundred account, should be able to cover the project, as well as take a portion of that to subsidize the shortfall of the generator.
Okay, so at this point, we're not shorting anything.
Correct.
For pulling from these funds.
Correct.
Okay, and the other question I had is on the Ferguson who's been selected here, was there any look at their record of change orders or their history, and, and whether there's that concern here and the contingency covering any potential change orders from them?
We, we did have a design through the project engineer and architect, there is always some unknowns in any project, this is very specific and specialized in the scope of work. The, the plan was very detailed, we, very hopeful that everything is included, there's always a risk, but we feel that through the design and what was bitted, we should cover everything.
Okay, because I, I know when we assess different things, especially when we got into the school construction, there was a lot of comparison, but that was more, more so on kind of the architectural side, on, on their experience on change orders, but I just had, I heard concerns from some folks that have done, have done different projects, and Ferguson being one of them, that has, we've had some experience with, so I was checking really, making sure that we realized, hey, we've had some experience, we've seen this much in the sense of change orders, and we're comfortable with this particular situation and this choice, just want to reaffirm that with you.
Sure, the plans and specs were very broad, where it put a lot of responsibility on the electrical contractor to make sure that everything was covered in their bid.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any other questions, concerns?
I'm okay, thanks for answering my questions.
We good? Okay, motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, thank you. Number seven.
Number seven, I do apologize for the delivery of the numbers at the last hour, but this was the, these are the tennis courts and the basketball courts, and as council may or may not be aware, we were opening the bids on Friday of last week, and we did need a little time to compare, we were fortunate enough, there is some good news in this, that we had two bids at least, so we did have a, a couple of bids that we could compare each of the bids and look at all of the warranties, all of the different design elements that they may have included or didn't include, and as you may know, we had been authorized for, I think it was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of which would be borrowed, and then the difference would be made up with Losop funds. The good news is that we perhaps will not need the whole five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had two bids, we've gone through Jack Healy, myself, Arts Volts, Jim Kepedes by phone, and Adam Tulen, our purchasing agent, we, we looked over and have, will be recommending that the bids be awarded to Classic Turf Company LLC for an amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars. There were two bids, they were very different from one another, however, when the alternates were included with the Classic Turf Company's base bid, they came up to almost very close in, in price, but we are recommending going with the less costly company. Jack is here to discuss any questions, he has discussed this with both companies a great deal, and feels very comfortable that they understand what's being asked of them. I don't know if anyone has been out by the tennis basketball courts, they're gone, they have been reduced to just the asphalt that is there, the town crew has prepared them as much as possible, so that this is ready to go if council so sees to approve the, the agenda item.
Okay, a motion on this?
Okay, authorize the town manager to enter into a contract agreement number two thousand seventeen dash oh three with Classic Turf Company LLC for an amount not to exceed four hundred and, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred dollars for the reconstruction of the Berlin High School tennis and basketball courts.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions for Mr. Healy?
Just had a quick question and a conversation I had with them briefly before the start of the meeting, was, there was an ad alternate of a hundred and fifty thousand, and then the other one did not give that ad alternate, and I just heard that there was some ad alternates considered, so, if you would just differentiate those for us, Jack, so we understand what that hundred and fifty thousand represented, and that was on the.
That's a surface, that's the surface of, of the tennis court.
And you just described that for the council and for the public, so.
The alternate was a, it's a rubber surface, something like a, like a track, I guess you would do, you would, you would say, it gives, it's more spring in it, not recommended for, for this application, the second contractor, the high contractor refused to bid it, he says it, it causes trouble, the first one, the price is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so he's probably not interested in doing it, or if he's doing it, he's going to make, make sure he covers himself on it.
Plus the maintenance that may come after that, and so forth.
Most courts are done with, with the, with the recommended paint that were, were, were included, both of, both of those are comfortable doing that, so, that's what, that's what we've included. The color selection, I was talking to the co- The, the color selection, let's talk to the coach, the color selection will come, you know, once we get started on, into the construction part, unless it's battleship gray, I don't really care.
One, one other question was their commitment or timing to complete it.
I talked to both of them, both of them, eh, what they said is they could get the concrete poured, this, we'd get the concrete completed this year. Again, and I think I've talked to a couple of times about the paint, neither one is really super comfortable saying to us that they're gonna get the paint down, but we have made arrangements, we, uh, both of them contracts came back, said they've done this in the past. What they would do is if they got the, the concrete, concrete work would be done this year, get it all set, get the fence up, everything would be ready. In the spring, if it didn't warm up fast enough so the tennis team could play on it, they put temporary lines down, once the tennis team is done using the court, they come back and they put the paint down.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions? No? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Number eight.
Public Works solicited proposals for the transport and disposal of various environmentally regulated materials from the catch base and cleaning. Bids were opened on August eleventh, five companies submitted bids, bids ranging from a high of sixty-two dollars per ton to the lowest of fifty-one ninety-five. The low bid of fifty-one ninety-five was submitted by WL French Excavating Corporation of North Billrica, Mass, and that is who staff is recommending awarding the bid in the amount of fifty-one ninety-five per ton for the transport and disposal of the regulated materials.
Okay, thanks, uh, motion on this?
Move to award bid number two thousand seventeen dash zero one to WL French Excavating Corporation of North Billrica, Mass, as the lowest qualified bidder in the amount of fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents per ton for transport and disposal of various environmentally regulated materials.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine.
Uh, this summer or at the end of this, oh, August, the Norton Road paving project was taking place and due to the location of two of the natural gas lines, the paving contractor, Tilcon, was only able to grind the center section of the section that was being resurfaced. Originally, we started with the town highway staff, was removing the pavement on the two edges, which would have been slow and painful and perhaps not allowing the project to be completed before the beginning of school. In order to utilize the town staff more efficiently and to complete the project, the decision was made to ask Tilcon to use their equipment to remove the pavement and complete the part of that project. They were previously approved as the paving contractor by the council and the work was completed by August twenty-fifth in the amount of fourteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. There is funding for the additional work in the bonded road improvements account, so this is just the authorization rather after the fact, but it needed to be done so that school could, or the buses could be using Norton Road when the school year began.
Okay, thank you, motion?
Sure, move to authorize payment to Tilcon Connecticut, Inc. in the amount of fourteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for additional work on the Norton Road paving project, August twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen.
Second on that?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, just have a, a question for Mr. Healy, if he could come up. So we've, we've talked a li- little about this, this is a concern a resident brought up to me about our use of Tilcon and, and whether we are kind of backed into the corner here, so my question is really, is there something that Tilcon did and that could be done in improving their scheduling that could have prevented this and that in the future we might be able to maybe hold them a little more accountable and to this and not then turn around and say, well, guess what, we'll, we'll, because of our scheduling, and, and this may be wrong, but because of our scheduling, then they now have to provide additional equipment and additional costs that we didn't necessarily anticipate to, to finish up the work in a time like that. Did they have any scheduling issues on doing the regular work and then we got pushed up against the wall because of them?
Not, not, not the way that, that way. The schedule this summer's been, for some reason, has been difficult to get, get scheduled. Uh, we, we contacted them, 'cause if you remember, we came to the council back in April, I think I gave you the schedule or the roads we were gonna do. It's been, I don't know if they, they've got a lot of work this year or, or what, it's been difficult to get them to give us a schedule at the exact date and sometimes we've had to push roads back or move them around a little bit to, to get the work done. All in all, we're committed to getting the roads, the roads that we, we told to get done, we want to get done this year, because I know one of the complaints I get in Public Works is, gee, you promised us you're gonna do a road, it's not, you know, in the past we haven't got it done. So we're committed to make sure any road we told to get done, we're gonna get done this year. This particular case, what really, what, what pushed us, and it wasn't Tilcon, it was that we, we did the call before you dig and the gas company didn't mark out the pipes until we were actually physically on site, which is, for some reason, they're usually very good about doing it and, and they didn't do it. So there was a presumption or, I don't wanna say presumption, maybe an assumption or thought that the, the, the gas pipes were on the side of the road when we, when in actuality, they were well within the, the road right away. Because, and we had the same situation, and it come up in Reservoir Road, we're looking at water lines, um, you can't do certain operations over top of gas lines and, and one of them's you can't gr, you can't use the grind. And I think you and I went back and forth, Dave, on this, you said, you know, what about town crews? If we'd had more, you know, an equivalent sized town, another town that, you know, I did work with, we had a totally different crew that we did roadwork, so we had the excavator, four loaders, uh, four ten-wheelers and all that equipment. We don't have that here, we had, we have a, we have a rubber tired backhoe, uh, one loader and six wheel trucks, and so it's not efficient for us to do that and when we're do, if we're doing that, we're not doing the normal maintenance, like mowing, mowing the sides of the road, backfilling, things like that. So we made the decision, I mean, and, and I did make the decision on a Monday morning that in order to get this done, um, I know Tilcon has that equipment and we made the decision to have them do it, get it done before school, it was efficient use of funds. It also prevents people from calling in and saying, you know, it's taking you two weeks to do a road, which normally takes you a week to do, so we made that decision.
And I appreciate the, the time and effort to present that and bring that forward so the, the public is aware of it and the reasons why we make some decisions, so I appreciate the transparency on that and, and taking care of this, Mr. Healy, thank you.
And I think, one last thing, I think you and I went back and forth and, and, and I think we came to a somewhat of an understanding that we could, um, you know, next year we bid this out, what we could do in order to not have a similar situation occur, we can put on the end of the, an addendum on the end of the contract and say, provide us with an hourly rate for an excavator, ten-wheel trucks, loaders and labor, so if this came up again, we could, we could extend the contract with an approved contractor that the council already approved.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, it was our best practicing of contracting, this was the recommendation.
Quick question for Jack, um, on, on that same thought, some of the things that the town did, could we put that in there too as options? I mean, seemed like we did a lot of pre-work and, and finished work, uh, removing curbs, doing the backfilling, um, was that part of the contract or we did that on our own?
Typically, the, the town does that on their own and that's typical with many towns. It's, it's a cost reduction thing, you know, we have labor to do.
That's what I was wondering is.
But you could, again, and that, we could put that in there and then at the time, let's say, we're, we're, in order to keep the, 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 um, projects going in a timely matter, we make the decision at the time of the project to say, okay, this project, this contractor does that, and the next project, we'll do it. And we do it with catch base and tops also.
I mean, it could be timing too, you might need the guys to get the fields ready and we can't, this road is way too big for us.
Yeah.
And you can sub it out.
You know, one of the things, eh, eh, going forward is I want, you know, I wanna make sure that I'm able to present to the council a schedule of roads for next year and, and our scheduled roads going forward, so that you see a road program which is turning every road over, every, depending on, on, on the use of roads, every ten to twenty years, you know, ten years like Kensington Road, twenty years for something like, like Rabbit Trail or something like that. You know, you and I talked about it, Mayor, with, with Rabbit Trail.
Right.
Just a technical question, they're not allowed to mill over any gas line?
The gas company would not allow us to mill over the, the gas line on, on Norton Road, it was, with the proximity, so the, um, Tilcon won't do it. So what you have to do is end up actually removing the asphalt.
They have to peel the asphalt.
Manually.
How is that less impact than milling? I don't understand.
I'm sorry, what?
You scratched it out with an excavator, how is that less impact?
They, it, it, it's even like the, eh, the vibration from the, from the, from the milling machine, one of the concerns they had, Charlie, was they came back to us, I, we had to go through an engineering review on that road and Reservoir Road, whether or not we could use a vibratory, um, roller, eh, to, to finish off the, off the, you know, and that, and if you don't vibratory roll the, you know, the asphalt, it's, it's just gonna come back up. So we went through that, that review also.
Yeah, I see them milling over gas lines all over the place, but the gas company just said no.
No.
And they also forgot to mark it.
Yeah.
I have a call into the PUC asking why.
Well, we have that and we have, you know, we, we took a little bit of time on, on Main Street too, you know, I'm sure you all got calls on that and flawed, that was the delay with, with the gas company.
A lot of comments on Main Street, yes.
Yeah, that's a whole other story, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks, any other?
Okay.
Comments, thanks, Jack. Uh, motion on the floor, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Appointments, um, I would ask, other than, than I would take a nomination for number one, I'd like to, uh, not do anything with the rest, I know we have a few other for some different commissions, but I've had some calls, some other people may be applying, so I'd rather have a kind of a nice slate of candidates for.
Can, can I ask a question on one of them?
Sure.
Even though we're not appointing for Bob Argizi?
Sure.
Is he still chair of Kensington Fire District or is he retired from that? Does anyone know?
Don't know, don't know.
Just curious if that would be a conflict for Matt Abassett or not?
I don't, I don't know.
Let's see.
I don't think he's still chair, I thought Joe.
He's a member of the Manabasset District. Or, no, I'm sorry, he used to be, I'm sorry.
I don't know if he still is, just kind of, I'm not sure if that would be a conflict.
Current in Pacific, yeah, he does say chairman, huh?
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's the past.
Yeah, I, I think it is, but I.
Yeah, we could find out.
You might wanna talk.
Yeah, we could find out. By now, there's another person interested, I think, actually, from what I understand, I was talking to John Dunham, there's gonna be two openings on the Manabasset.
I believe you're right.
Right? There's somebody else that is.
I think Mr. Kindeland, uh, was seeking to get off, I don't know if he sent in, he could send it to the Manabasset though, right?
Right.
So we don't get the.
I think John said there'll be two, there's two, there might be two now, so I just was waiting to see what, if there's two and there, I know there was another person that was interested in, in applying for one of those.
Is there a party requirements for that one? It doesn't, it doesn't look like it, but.
You know, we were looking at that today because we looked at the charter of the Manabasset, it doesn't appear so, but I would welcome someone else's eyes on that as well.
Every other commission, I feel, so I don't know why this one would be different.
I don't know if it's because they require representation from each of the towns.
Yeah, yeah.
It's more that.
Yeah, there's numbers from the town based on the population, but I don't know that, it didn't seem to have a.
It shouldn't matter, but it just.
Well, maybe.
They used to have a D R and a U.
That's what it was, yeah.
It was one of each.
Yeah, right now, right, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what it's currently on.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
And that may have just been.
Coincidence.
But the opportunity to look at that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff, could you look at that and just see for the Manabasset? Like I said, there should, I, I think there's gonna be two openings, so.
Might as well wait.
Huh?
Might as well wait and.
Yeah, well, and there's some, someone else, John told me someone else who's gonna apply too. He just said some other name, I said, well, I'll have him send in a thing, you know, if he wants to do it, so we'll just wait and see who comes in, make sure we, and then as far as the rest too, there's other people, I think of other commissions, but if we'd like to take a nomination for the library board?
Okay.
Maybe we can do that.
Bless you.
Bless you.
I will nominate Carol Ranieri, if that's how you say that, Ranieri, for the library board.
You got it.
Okay, great, um.
Second?
No, second.
Oh, sorry.
We don't need a second, right on the.
Get a little light just here.
Okay.
Oh, you're ready to go.
Any, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations and make a motion or vote on. All those in favor of Carol Ranieri being appointed to library board?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, welcome Carol.
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back, that's right.
I have a question on just one other thing.
Yes.
I saw that there was a Michael Adelson applying for planning and zoning and there was an Adelson leaving planning and zoning.
Yes.
Same family?
I believe that's his son.
Okay.
From what I understand.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but, good question, there may be other people interested too, from what I understand, so we'll wait and see, get some more, so we have an entire, you know, perhaps some choices too would be good, right?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll just, no action on the rest of those, we took care of that one, where we at, around our minutes, I guess now? I'm sorry, town manager's court, minutes or later, town manager's court.
Just a couple of things, um, I think you all received an invitation for next Wednesday evening, the twenty-eighth, at Veterans Park, there's going to be a concert at five P M, I believe it is.
Five thirty, 'cause I, five thirty, I think the dedication is at five?
Five, eh, eh, I know that the, um, Veterans it's at five o'clock for something, so that maybe the.
I know, of course, this thing was.
The ceremony will start at five, the march begins at five thirty.
Yeah, five thirty, and bring your own lawn chairs there, it was suggested. And then also, the good news is that for the longest time, we haven't been able to process passports because of difficulties with, um, something that happened in New Jersey, apparently, and so the passport office forbid that to happen in the town clerk's office.
It's considered a conflict because the issue bursts, I think it is.
But the good news is that the library will be taking that over.
That's great.
And so it's going to be by the end of October, uh, they'll be processing, they have gone through their training, they were approved as a site and, uh, we are almost ready to go, so I will have at the next meeting the, the exact date they'll start. They'll probably do it in the evening and probably a Saturday as well, so it'll be much more convenient than it has been right now, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, that's awesome.
That's it.
Great. Thank you, special committee reports?
Yeah, just wanted to mention, since, I don't know, Denise, maybe we can get an email out, if people have conflicts on the audit committee for the twenty-eighth, we scheduled the meeting for six thirty that night.
Oh, yeah.
And we have this Navy band playing on the same, you know, earlier, I don't know if there's a conflict.
John, you didn't realize that the audit committee is. I can, we can maybe, if you wanna change the audit committee, oh, that was through the auditors though.
The auditors, yeah.
I can get in touch with them.
Okay.
I also had a question actually from Councilor Russo for Fields Commission, he was, he just had a question about the baseball field at Sage Park, I think maybe I discussed it at the last meeting, there was some concern about.
Yes.
And.
Lights.
Dust and lights, whatever, just to see if maybe, you know, if there's been any
Dust and lights, whatever, just to see if maybe, you know, if there's been any discussion about it, or...
Maybe I can get an email out and try and get a meeting for that too, and get an update from our people.
I'm also, I was thinking of October sixth, which is a Thursday for the water folks' meeting.
Oh.
That's a Thursday night.
Yes.
Because it would be easier, I'm told that Kensington Fire won't come during the day.
How nice.
So, I will do, um, playing fields committee meetings and audit, I mean, in, in ordinance.
So, yeah, so, so the sixth of, uh, that's for the water.
We're gonna try, we're gonna aim, yep.
Both would, would be available, Worthington and...
Yet to be confirmed.
Will, will they, they'll sit in the same room together with us?
Trying, I'm trying.
Good, no, that's good, that's important, we all get them on. Um, good, yeah, that'd be good, and, and the other, the, uh, regional water, they're okay for evening?
Yeah, they had said they were.
Oh, good, okay, great. Yeah, that'd be great. Going a little bit forward maybe. Okay, uh, good. Counselors, communications?
Um, yes, sir.
I've, I've had some communications from some of our taxpayers, and it concerns the water departments. Some people have gotten bills and paid bills to the various water departments that are labeled as taxes.
Yeah.
And they're not members of that fire district. And the other problem is, um, it's my understanding, and I may, I don't, I haven't seen it in writing, I've been told a number of times, that that money labeled as a tax, a mill rate, is supposed to be for infrastructure improvement, not for general operations. The general operation should be paid for by the water and sewer charge, and this tax rate. I have one, uh, taxpayer that, over the last five years, has paid about fifteen thousand dollars, and, and they're, I'm sorry, sixty-five thousand dollars. And they're not a member of the Worthington Fire District, they're served by the Berlin Water Department. And I'm sure they're correct, cause I hooked the water and sewer up to that building, so I know where it's from.
And, and unfortunately, I don't think we, we have any governance over...
Is it on the edge, is it on the border?
It's on the Berlin turnpike, I'm not sure where the border is.
Because I, it, and this is going back in my memory, so it may not be accurate, but there were a couple of properties that physically were located in one district, but were serviced by the other district.
So they'd be subject to that tax, even though they're not serviced by them.
I believe that that might be the case.
And I'm told that they called the, uh, Berlin Taxes Assessor's Office to question it, and they were told, well, you have to pay that tax because that supports your fire department. And that doesn't seem quite right to me, cause under budget committee, I thought we supported the...
So if they're in the, the geography of...
Geography of the property is in, say, Worthington, and the line that they get their water from is Water Control. So they would pay, they maybe pay, and I don't know if this is the property, but there were a couple like that, and it happened...
So they pay, are the town water bill?
And they pay a tax to the Worthington Fire District. There were like one or two random areas like that.
I know, I got a bill from the Kensington Fire District this year, and I don't have water or sewer at my home. And when I objected, they said, well, the Berlin Taxes Assessor put you on our list, but we'll take it off.
Yeah.
I said, well, thank you, but how many of our citizens are paying these bills thinking they're legitimate? They think, the way it's formatted, it looks like it comes from the town.
Well, they're, they're on the same system.
I mean, I get the Kensington Fire District one, and it, I think it's pretty clear, it says Kensington Fire District, it doesn't say town or Berlin anywhere.
I know, it does say that, because I called them immediately, and they said, oh, yeah, that's a mistake. But I'm just wondering, are a number of people paying these bills, not realizing that they're not subject to it?
But it's crazy, with your address, you would think the fire district would know that there's no sewer or water there, you know? Regardless of what the town tells them.
Well, they, they told me that the town assessor put me on the list.
Yeah, that's kinda crazy.
I'm just worried that a number of people are paying these charges that aren't subject to them.
So, so that would mean, I mean, either the two districts, if they're in that geographic location of that district, even though, let's say they might be in the, in a, in the Berlin water system, they might have, they pay the tax to, to, to the fire district.
And theoretically, that was what the fire districts always said, was that the tax, the mill tax, was for infrastructure. And the water and sewer charges are for the operating expenses. That was what theoretically it was supposed to always be for.
All the more reason to combine them.
I guess my question is, how do we find out where the money gone?
Unfortunately, with the two districts that are not part of the Berlin Water, it's a little harder to find out, because they have boards and, and chairs and people that govern that.
You have one district where the chair was getting paid, and another district where that wasn't. I mean, there, it's been a little difficult to find out.
The people within the district have to question their districts.
But if, if they're collecting money, not do them, and our tax assessor is saying, oh, yeah, that's for your fire department, I think we got a real problem.
Are they a public agency? Cause if they're a public agency, just F.O.I., do an F.O.I. request.
However, it could be that they said fire district, Charlie, and people don't tend to understand or...
Yeah, right.
And I don't know that, but...
That's very possible, but some we ought, some way we should clarify it for our citizens, because most people in town have no idea there's three water departments.
You're absolutely correct.
They're not in one of the two, yeah?
Yep, yep. And, and I agree with that.
Well, going forward, so you know, that's one of the purposes of our, our, our meeting, October...
Sixth, if we can pull it off.
If we can do it, is to kinda start that conversation with the, um...
Districts.
Fire districts, and, uh, and just see what we can do going forward, cause perhaps it's not nineteen twenty-three anymore when they started, and maybe we can move forward and, and maybe, you know, do something which would make some sense.
Just one more thing on that.
Yes.
If they're not doing the infrastructure repairs, and the town did wind up taking over those...
Yes.
Services, we might be stuck with a huge repair bill.
Yeah, well, I mean, let's, let's put it this way, in my thoughts, if we get that far, uh, whatever happens, before we took anything over, we would do some type of, uh, forensic audit, is what I would wanna see, that, where the money went, where it goes, where it is, before we would ever...
Absorb anything.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna absorb some issues if they have...
Did Art do anything with the pipes with the other district? Does he kind of know what shape they're in, if we're gonna get...
Art's a woman?
Yeah, yeah, when he, when we were doing all of that big work before, so I don't know if...
Jack and Ray have gotten a lot farther than anyone has ever in the past, and I think that, when we were at the meeting...
Yeah, they've been working on it.
They have really uncovered a lot of information and a lot of problems, quite honestly though, with the East Berlin section and a lot of the pipes that they took over when the East Berlin Water Company went out of business many years ago. So there are issues, there definitely are issues. It's a large problem though, that I think, uh, needs to be addressed, and I, I, I think the mayor is on the right track. Somehow, someone has to get their hands around the, the issue and, and begin to...
I agree completely.
Figure it out.
It's a very difficult one, as we all know, right?
Something we agree on.
Everyone, I think that's, you're right.
That's just probably the...
Everybody in the town would agree to it.
Probably the most difficult issue there is, honestly, right?
I think part of the solution is gonna be to inform the people that your water doesn't get served by your town, it's a separate district.
Yeah.
Somehow educate the public, I think, someone will demand that.
People that don't know, we can start with that. I mean, certainly, start that.
Mayor, just, just some more input on that. Uh, Mr. Dreamer put into the Water Control Commission his budget, uh, a particular study, uh, project that is going to investigate that to some degree. I don't believe it's an audit, but, you know, customary charges and where... So I'm expecting that that will be one of the, um, onion pills that's gonna help move this along.
That's great.
That was a specific one that, that we had in our budget discussions, lengthy discussion about, cause that was gonna be helpful to all of us, I think.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I, hopefully, you know, as we go forward, it'll, I mean, to, to combine them just would be, right, economies of scale and all that other thing, you know, just to, Lewis, since it's twenty thousand people, three water districts seems ridiculous, quite frankly, but I know it's...
I think Counselor Panus is on track though with education, because for some of these districts, they actually have to vote themselves out of being, so until people know about it, it's not gonna happen.
And it's issues that are like that, that will cause people to start questioning their own districts, and if they're...
And some of it may just be a...
Our answers, that's fine, but...
Maybe a lack of knowledge, I mean, we, you know, that's a start.
They just think the people deserve an explanation, what's going on.
Cast dispersion on the districts, maybe they don't educate their populace.
No, it's a lot of money, and the public has a right to know where it's going.
No, I, I agree.
The budget's wide open, that's, you know...
Yeah, no, I agree, uh, it's something, so look, going forward, hopefully we're going down that road to explore it, talk to the districts, maybe, maybe at the meeting we'll suggest, maybe they could put out something to educate their...
We're dealing with another individual who has issues with their district, which we're trying to help them with, but it's difficult, because it's not the town's district, so, yeah.
Okay, and they have different rules. Yeah, that's the problem.